Hands up. Do you solemn, excuse me, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge your duties as a member of the Board of Education of the Hicksville Exempted Village School District, Defiance County, Ohio, to the best of your ability and in accordance with the laws now in effect and hereafter to be enacted during your continuance in said office and until your successor is elected and qualified? The answer is, I do, I do. Okay, thank you.
Thanks Jen for your continued service and Tyler, welcome aboard.
Welcome.
All right, we will call this meeting to order. I am serving as President pro tempore at the moment.
Okay. Mrs. Carrier?
Here.
Mr. Levy?
Here.
Mrs. Mazur?
Here.
Mr. Methman?
Here.
And Mr. Vedder?
Here.
All right, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we have the election of officers for 2024. We need to nominate president for 2024. We need a motion and a name.
I move to nominate.
I'll move.
All right, so Jen first and Galen second. To elect Stephanie Garikson-Mazur as president on the Hicksville School Board of Education for 2024. Roll call please.
Yes, Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs., Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Sorry.
Motion passes five to zero. It is approved. We need to elect a vice president for 2024. I would like to nominate Mrs. Jen Carrier. That's my motion. I need a second.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And roll call please.
Okay, Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to zero. Fun stuff, Legislative Liaison to the OSBA for 2024.
I plan on going.
Okay, so you're okay with doing this?
I'm.
Okay, so Jen is okay, I need, I will.
I'll move. I'll second.
Eric and Galen, thank you. Moved by Eric to appoint Jen Carrier as our liaison, seconded by Galen. And roll call please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Student Achievement Liaison for 2024.
I'll do that one if somebody else wants it.
Yeah, I was gonna say I can do it to whichever. I'll do it.
If you have more seniority, you can have it.
I'll do it.
All right, so.
I'll move to appoint Galen.
Thank you, and a second please.
I'll second.
All right, so Tyler first, Eric seconded, and Galen is now going to be the Student Achievement Liaison for 2024. Roll call please.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. We need an Athletic Council representative for 2024.
You can keep doing that.
Um, I hadn't done it the last few years.
I'm the current head.
Eric currently is, so.
Oh, good, okay, sorry. Happy to keep doing it unless somebody else wants it, they're more than welcome to it as well.
Are you enjoying, you're, you're good?
I'm good.
Okay, so I will move to appoint Eric Vedder.
I'll second.
Thank you. Jen, to appoint Eric Vedder. Roll call please.
Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. We need to appoint Tax Incentive Review Committee Representative for 2024.
Well, that's typically been done by me, but Mike and I talked about that and he would really like to do that because.
He would probably really like that.
Well, I, I would. It makes sense because he deals with the money part of it and they lately have been doing those meetings anyhow on computers that we both can get on anyhow.
Yeah, I would, I would like to take that as, I'd like to get more involved in that, dealing with our tax abatements, CRAs, when they may be coming off and when we may be getting our payment in lieu of, so I have a better feel for where things stand on that. I would wish to take that position.
All right, so I have a motion by Jen.
I'll second.
And a second by Galen to appoint our treasurer as the Tax Incentive Review Committee Representative for 2024. Congratulations for that exciting little.
Always exciting.
Agitation to your job. I know, I'm so sorry for you.
You sense it, you can see it.
I don't think you could get that out fast enough. I might call that, Jen.
Roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. Congratulations, Mr. Rubin.
Okay.
All right, to establish our regular meeting date, time, and place for 2024, which is typically the third Monday of the month in this room, to begin at 5:30. Do we have a motion?
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Roll call please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. We have the adoption of the following standing authorizations. We authorize to waive reading of board minutes unless otherwise requested by a board member. To authorize treasurer to secure advances from auditor when funds are available and payable to the school district. To authorize our treasurer to invest any inactive funds at the most productive interest rate. To authorize the treasurer to pay all bills within the limits of the appropriation resolution and make appropriation modifications as needed. To authorize the superintendent to employ such temporary personnel as is needed for emergency situations. To authorize the superintendent to serve as purchasing agent for the school district and to authorize the superintendent to purchase or secure annual events on which public funds may be expended for meals, refreshments, gifts, and amenities.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen. Second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All right, thanks Tyler and Jen. Roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five to zero.
It will be time now at 5:38 to adjourn our organizational meeting.
We can actually just roll right into it.
Can we roll right into it?
Yeah.
Oh, that's perfect.
I'll just make note that we finish this at, would you say?
Five thirty-eight.
Five thirty-eight, yes.
All right, so no motion needed, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
And let's go into our next set of minutes here. So we can omit the next roll call or?
Yes, yes.
And, okay, so we have no visitors today. We do have Jeff here for the technology report, so we'll just get started.
All right, so with the security this year, the key word's been security with, with technology. Now WACA did security scans for any districts that asked for it, so we went ahead and just to kind of look and see where we're at with everything on our network and everything happening there. The biggest thing from the security report that we had was the networking equipment that we have in the closet. So we bought all new wireless equipment, so we're up to par there, but the equipment that's in our closet that controls everything else came with the building, so 2008. A lot of the stuff actually end of life in 2015, so they're not getting any security updates and stuff at that point. And honestly, it hasn't been too big of a deal. Security has just become more relevant in the last several years with a lot more of the, like, the cyber attacks and the ransomwares and things like that. So a good thing, our E-rate funding went from sixty to seventy percent this year and with the E-rate category two funds, which are for equipment and things like that, we have, I want to say it's like a hundred and fifty thousand, I think, left in category two. That E-rate will cover seventy percent of what we purchased. So I put out our bid so we can update all the security in there and I'm just starting to get bids back here, so that's kind of there. Once we get that updated, there are going to be a lot of things that we're going to be able to get a lot more secure on the network and protect ourselves from all these bad guys that are trying to do crazy things. I know there was one school district over in Toledo that had a ransomware attack and it cost them several hundred thousand dollars. So trying to stay on top of that to prevent that from happening. So that's kind of the big thing coming up and we'll have those bids and hopefully it'll be by April and then we'll get that all approved and all installed this summer.
Yeah, ready to go for the next question.
Hopefully that we get good news there. Other than that, everything's been running smooth. I excused the principals tonight since we didn't have school. We had our first cancellation last week.
Mm-hmm.
Other than that, everything's peachy.
All right, and then I suggest we move on to minutes in financials. Motion please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler. All right, so we seen the minutes from the regular board meeting on December eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Treasurers consent agenda items are cash reconciliation as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, the financial statements for December twenty twenty-three, to approve the amended official certificate of estimated resources for fiscal year 2024 as presented, total general fund resources of sixteen million, seven hundred, one thousand, three hundred and nine dollars and seventy-one cents, and total resources for all funds of twenty-one million, five hundred, twenty-three thousand, thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents. We have to approve fiscal year 2024 permanent appropriations as presented, total general fund appropriations of fourteen million, three hundred, fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred, seventy-three dollars and eighty cents, and total appropriations for all funds of seventeen million dollars, fifty-two, fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars, sorry, seventeen million, fifty-two thousand, seventy-five dollars and twelve cents. Any comments from you, Mr. Rubin?
Well, um, no, not really, unless you got some questions.
Any commentary? All right, so we will move on to item three, to accept the following donations. Two hundred and fifty dollars from the Fraternal Order of Eagles, Gary, twenty-five, fifty-six for high school student of the quarter lunches, two hundred and fifty dollars from Angela Zidek for the class of twenty twenty-six for archery concessions, six hundred dollars from the wholesale house for middle school student of the quarter lunches, and twenty-five hundred dollars from Jim Schmidt Family Dealerships for the softball team. Any discussion? No, just a general thanks to our community that is, as always, so very supportive of the school. Roll call please.
Okay, Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. As we move on to the employment of certified staff, and I need a motion please.
I'll move.
All right, I'll give Jen the first and Tyler second. Thank you. To recommend to approve an addendum to the superintendent's employment contract for Keith Countryman from August first, twenty twenty-one through July thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. This is just making something that was commonly done in practice to be written down. Okay, any discussion on this? No. Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion approved, five to zero. I need a motion for the next item.
I'll move.
Thank you, Eric.
I'll second.
Thank you, Galen. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contract for extended days during the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year to be served after the scheduled school year for Paula Frye, two and a half days. Recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Jennifer Bennett Cunningham for assistant softball coach, Josh Fries for head junior high boys track coach, Ryan Meiser for assistant baseball coach at forty percent, and Kelly Van Horn for head junior high girls track coach. Also recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five school year. Already, Jeff Hott for head boys golf coach, Paul Payne head cross country coach, and Jacqueline Sebenaler for head girls golf coach. Any discussion?
Just that Paula Frye is our social worker that replaced Brittany and Brittany had five extended days and so since Paula started in the middle of the year, we just gave her the two and a half.
Perfect.
So in the summer then we'll approve her for five, which will be for next year.
Okay, thank you for verification. Any other discussion? Thank you, roll call.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes, motion passes five to zero. The employment of classified staff, I need a motion please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. To recommend to approve Brooklyn Graber as a classified substitute for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. To recommend to approve the resignation from Alyssa Scranton as mini-aces wrestling coach. To recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Ian DeWitt, assistant high school and junior high wrestling coach at fifty percent, James Egley for assistant track coach, Garrett Franz for assistant baseball coach at twenty-five percent, Phil Handy assistant baseball coach at thirty-five percent, Becca Harvey for assistant softball coach, Pam Payne for assistant track coach. Also to recommend to approve the following as volunteers for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Ashley Hammond track, Michael Myers track, and Maddie Madison, Sebenaler, track. To recommend to approve the following supplemental contracts for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Justin Davis head football coach and Samantha Lavin for head volleyball coach. Any discussion, commentary? Okay, roll call please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Services and agreements, motion please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Galen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tyler. To recommend to approve the annual OSBA membership dues from January twenty-four to December twenty twenty-four. This would include electronic versions of the OSBA briefcase, school management news, and the virtual transportation supervisor subscriptions. To recommend to approve the twenty twenty-four Board of Education Superintendent and Treasurer scholarship in the amount of seven hundred dollars. To recommend to approve a revised foundation deduction agreement between Hicksville Exempted Village Schools and Northwest Ohio Educational Service Center for fiscal year twenty twenty-four special education services. The foundation deduction amount will be revised to an annual amount of eight hundred and thirty-five thousand, and nine hundred, sorry, dollars and sixteen cents. This is an increase of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, thirty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. Discussion?
Well, yeah, it's getting more and more expensive, especially for special education-related costs. Of the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollar, well, first of all, there's an estimate done basically right before the beginning of school year, based off students coming from the year before or where we may know where we're at at that time. So the ESC gives, provides an estimate. Seventy-five thousand of it we pay directly to them, so they, they have some funding coming in and the rest comes out of the foundation. And so we have a mid-year, Homer Hendricks provides us with a mid-year revision and our revision obviously is up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. About half of that, right around sixty-four thousand, is due to two students that end up, multiple disability students and with the services associated with that. That was about sixty-four thousand and then instead of one aide that we were paying for, there was three and like one-on-one aides. And so that increased it more than the other sixty, but we had some stuff that went down. That was about eighty thousand increase, but then we've had a few things that went down, just a little bit, not a lot. So, and a lot of this is dependent upon several factors. One of them is the number of people in a certain area such as the IEC and the number of days they attend. And we're billed, the whole ESC is billed for that. So let's say if it's a million dollars and there's a hundred kids in it, it's the million divided by a hundred. But if all of a sudden then there's only ninety kids in it, the million's divided by ninety. You know, necessary, we'll see cost reduction for a drop of ten, ten students. So if we have the same amount that we had the year before, it's going to cost more just because the numbers are down. And so there's some of that moving around in these different areas, preschool, special ed, OT-related things, the IEC, vision, et cetera. There's, there's a bunch of areas that they help us out with. Also inflation, that obviously factors into things, and then the movement of students that are in a certain area. So those things all kind of come in and they create adjustments at mid-year. We get to the end of the year, there will be a revision. The ESC sends our district what they have as far as all the students, where they're going, what services they're getting. We review that, double-check, get back to them, and then they end up giving us a final bill near the end of the year. So.
So are some of these, let's get rid of that, most of that makes sense. Are some of these still like services that we, we still like bill for that we're going to get reimbursed later? Do you see what I'm saying?
Well.
There are certain things that we bill for.
There is, we do have IDEA preschool dollars, it's like nine thousand dollars. We used to have IDEA Part B, Special Education, which is over two hundred thousand dollars, but with the establishment of the classroom that we have, our cross cat essentially, that money is going directly to our people's payroll rather than going to purchase services. So that makes sense. Other than that, and there is a preschool grant, it's four thousand dollars per student that qualifies, and I'm not sure what our number is this year, if it's about sixteen or whatever it is, but not all preschool students qualify that. There's criteria that's been set by the state. So that, that, those are the kind of the funds that help pay for those and the rest is coming from the district itself.
Discussion or questions?
We have, kind of along the lines of the resolution coming up, but didn't require a resolution. The Fair School Funding Plan, Inc. is, is a new nonprofit group that's been set up with State of Ohio, treasurers and superintendents that are members. And as you recall, the Fair School Funding Plan is the mechanism that's been placed to help with the last two biennial budgets. And there was like three years of study and work done by superintendents and treasurers throughout the state in, in, with, with the help of senators or, see if we have it here, it was Cup and Patterson is who they were. And Bob Cup and John Patterson. And they worked together for about three years to come up with this Fair School Funding Plan. And it's a formula based on what actual inputs are to educate children in the State of Ohio. The state's never had anything like that before. What we had been doing for about twenty years, more than that, but especially the twenty-some years that I've been a treasurer, is about every two years, four years at max, there was a new funding formula. And it was really basically a residual thing. It's pretty much what the state had left. Here's what we go to our public schools. It wasn't really based off of any actual cost. And so the Fair School Funding Plan, that's, that's the whole impetus behind that, to be able to develop something fair, that schools will know what they're getting and be able to provide the services they need by that funding. So anyways, there was a six-years, six-year phase in of this and with this current biennial budget will be in years three and four. Well, it'll be very important to hit five and six in the next biennial budget. So anyways, this group has formed, they're asking for some contribution that obviously helped to make it continue to prosper. And so what it comes down is thirty cents per student for calendar year two thousand and twenty-four. So I'm going to go ahead and, we're going to go ahead, unless you have something to say otherwise, go ahead and enter that membership.
Yes, that is a good idea.
So, yeah, it comes out to two hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty cents, but this organization will help us in turn. We get Fair, Fair School Funding Plan completely approved, it's going to bring us a heck of a lot more than two hundred and sixty-three dollars. And, you know, one thing keep in mind too, especially our people in our community, is one of the things that I know I as treasurer always try not to go back for new monies. I've had been involved in some renewals over the years, also new monies for construction projects, but in my twenty-four years, we've never brought in new operating monies. And so I hope that that continues and I'm sure so does everybody else in this room and our community. So the Fair, Fair School Funding Plan is going to be critical that we don't have to go back to community and ask for new monies. No promises, but that's the plan, that's the hope, that this is how this will all play out.
So I heard the best like analogy for the whole Fair School Funding. And so they essentially said that the State of Ohio, just like we would set a budget for Christmas shopping, for your Christmas presents, you set a budget and then you divide it by the amount of people you're buying for and that's what you spend on them. So that's essentially what the state did. They would just designate this is the amount of money we're spending for education and then divide it by all the students, not looking at what it actually costs to educate a student well and then take that number and multiply it by the amount of students that are in Ohio and that should be our funding. So they went at it just saying X amount is all we're spending and let's divide that by students instead of saying, how much does it really cost to educate a student? And everybody should get that amount. So that way they have the funding to educate a student well and to look at the people who educate students well and say, what are you doing and what do things cost so we can educate it like you are.
In addition to that, last Tuesday, I attended Superintendent Treasurers' meeting at the ESC and one of the things they talked about is special education funding. It's, it's considered a categorical, other words, we get this funding and then you have certain things that attach to it. Special education is one of them and there's been a two-year study that's been done and has come out to say the State of Ohio is woefully under funding special education. And as you can see, as we talked about earlier with the ESC contract going up a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, you know, and that's not, you know, like I said, two aides, one-on-one aides, eighty thousand dollars. Special education students. students, you know, their staff, we need staff, one-on-one, et cetera. So they are expensive. And so the hope also is, special education will be funded better, the categorical aid for that, and be able to help offset when we see increases like this. So.
Definitely benefit. Thank you very much. Then we'll take roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Moving on to other business. I need a motion, please.
I'll move.
Thank you, Jen.
I'll second.
Thank you, Eric. Recommend to approve Resolution Number 2024 hyphen oh four, Resolution to participate in the OSBA Legal Assistance Fund. And that was just discussed very well. So any other discussion on this? All right.
Well, yeah, the Legal Assistance Fund is slightly different.
Okay, so let's.
But that was, I sent out an email earlier.
To us. Yeah, that was from, that's, that's.
And this one takes a resolution. Why it's separated on here, because the state is requiring a resolution. We have not been a member of that in the past, but it's two hundred and fifty dollars to also help get legal assistance through the state to help public schools prosper.
And the thing about that, too, that's one thing I like about going to Capitol, is hearing some of those lawsuits, because they're not necessarily our lawsuits, but they affect education. And so they help in defending those lawsuits, which ultimately affect us.
There's going to be precedents set. Be nice to know about.
And I don't know if any of you are interested. I know that there are several things that I get via email, like as an educator, that are really very interesting, that kind of shows the direction that things are going on top of getting board stuff. So as much as you can educate yourselves about what's going on in this world of education, particularly in Ohio, would be a good thing, because there's some interesting things coming down the pike, I think. All right. Any other discussion? Thanks a lot, Mike, for looking into all this stuff for us.
Yep.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion passes five zero. Thank you. We need a motion for the classroom.
I'll move. I'll second.
Thank you, Galen. To recommend to approve a five-day New York City trip for the class of 2024. The proposed date of travel is March 19 through March 23, 2024. Should be a grand time and a little bit chilly. Any discussion? No. All right. Roll call, please.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. Motion approved. Five zero. Annual business.
I wanted to ask about archery, the archery position. Have we had any interest or?
That would be a principal question. I haven't said anything to me.
I assume since nobody was on the agenda.
Right, no. Hasn't been brought to me, Jen, so.
Just kind of business. I've heard a couple of really nice comments from people in the community about how nice the school looks outside. I mean, even if they don't make it inside, they seem to really enjoy the way that it looks and how well-kept it is. So I think that's something we should say, yeah, got to go on. So.
I'm glad you said that, because you've heard me say that numerous times, how nice our building looks inside and out. And I feel like, you know, it's always been an expectation from our community, that we take care of what we've got. And I think that that comment reflects what we're trying to do out here. So thank you for saying that.
Any other discussion? No unannounced, unannounced guests. We are not going into executive session. So the only question I have is, before we adjourn, is it okay to move February's to the last Monday of February, February's meeting? Or if not, I just won't be here. So that would be February 26 rather than February 19.
If we do, I might be late.
Like how late? Like, could we move it to six o'clock and you would be here, or? Is, but I need to make sure, is everybody okay with a six o'clock on February 26?
Works for me.
Yeah? Okay. Check those calendars.
I'm thinking I got Sunday 26.
Just move it back thirty minutes, too?
Mm-hmm. Yep, six o'clock.
For that night only.
Just for that night. The rest of it will be the third Monday. And, I mean, obviously you don't need me here to run a meeting, but.
It's nice, Dan.
Okay, shall we?
I think, I think it'd be all right.
We're good?
Yep.
All right. So if we can just, for one time only, have it on the fourth Monday, so Monday, February 26, at six o'clock PM, in this room. And so if I could have a motion for adjournment?
I'll move.
At six oh six. Thank you. Galen?
I'll second.
And Tyler?
Six oh six PM. And roll call, please.
Mr. Methman?
Yes.
Mr. Levy?
Yes.
Mrs. Carrier?
Yes.
Mr. Vedder?
Yes.
And Mrs. Mazur?
Yes. We are adjourned. Five zero.